Thank you, Jose.
I was last, I was watching the news about the cops and everything.
There we are with our opening screen looking good. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's meeting of the Environmental Quality Commission. It is Thursday, October 13th at 2022. It's a regularly called meeting. Mr. Hillman, would you make sure you take our roll call, please?
Chairperson Foley?
Yes, I am here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Commissioner Capps? Commissioner Sario?
Here.
And Commissioner Trombetta?
Here, here.
Okay, because I, you know, when we vote, I just want to make a point so that we're all aware of it. When we do vote, and I ask for the commissioners to vote, we have to make sure that we all hear our voices. Okay? And then it will be recorded, and then no one in the future can maybe make us think, well, they could, but we followed all the rules of Robertson's, so thank you. Okay. Perfect. All right, so that's done. If you are able, would you please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. And didn't start out as a very good day for people down in Bristol. My, I was talking to a police officer just before the meeting on a different matter, and they said it really rocked them all because it was the type of meeting that, or the type of event that happened. And so our hearts and our hopes will go to the families and the and the police department as a whole. They lost two police officers, and the third one was released this afternoon from hospital in my home. So hopefully he will continue to recover and can report back to work. Just make sure, take your breath away. Okay. We have lovely minutes. Oh, I thought I did. Oh, I know I did. I just put him in a place that was really safe for the month of September 8th. Do do I have anyone? Have any, excuse me, corrections or suggestions or anything of that nature?
I do.
Commissioner Baca?
Under, under events.
Okay, hold on. I'm looking for my copy so I can make sure I make a note. Organized right this moment, but go ahead.
Under events, it says Chamber of Commerce registration. The fee was $60, not 160.
Okay, hold on a moment. Letter, letter, event, letter. Oh, say the amount again?
It was $60, not 160.
Okay, six zero. Okay, so we'll, we'll take that correction. Thank you. Anything else?
Patty, can I ask a question? It's Mitch.
Who is me?
Mitch Page.
Yes, go ahead, of course.
Are these the minutes where I'm listed as unexcused absence? Are these the minutes where I'm listed as having an unexcused absence?
Yeah, if I don't hear from anybody, they get unexcused. If they tell me they're absent because of whatever, then they get, they just get a normal absence.
Because I wasn't asked for my, in the roll call, I wasn't asked to say that I'm here tonight. I just wanted to ask about that.
Correct, because the people that are in the roll call, like in a, what you call it, meeting, in a town council meeting, are only those who can vote. And unfortunately, we would love to have you be able to vote, Mitch. But that's not how the dang rules are written.
So if I'm not listed in the roll call, why would I be listed as either present or absent?
Because we, anybody that's here, we list them. That's just kind of the way it is, but you have a good point. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit and consider.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's highly inappropriate, and I would request, as I register my complaint with you, that it be removed and never be done again. I don't accept it. I think it's rude and unnecessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anything more in the minute? Nothing? Then may I have a motion to pass the minutes with the correction of the Chamber of Commerce registration as brought up by Commissioner Baca?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes with the corrections.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second it.
Joe?
Second it.
Thank you. All in favor? I have to hear your voice.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Okay, thank you so much. And, okay, so that's our first second, first, that's done. Thank you. Do we, we have the agenda in front of you. Is there any changes if you want to move any of the items in the agenda around? Mike, you're gonna be coming up in two items, so we're not gonna keep you here all night.
Appreciate that.
Oh, well, it's, it's important. But any changes to the agenda? Not hearing anything, we're gonna move on. Okay, public participation. Do we have anybody from the public who has arrived in the public room?
No, no public as of now.
Okeydoke, we're gonna move on. I like when this part of the meeting moves fast. It gets me all jazzed up. All right, oh, okay, so guess what? We're gonna talk about what do you call this? Sustainable Connecticut. Which is very exciting. Okay, we have a guest, Mike D'Amato. Mike, I was given with your, the M in your last name to be capitalized. Is that correct?
The A.
The, I meant the A, okay, but the A should be capitalized.
Yep.
I just want to make sure I don't make a error in people's names. Okay, so the A is a capital. Mike, well, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
You know, I'm gonna let you just go with it because I hear we got some good news and some interesting things, and I have a bunch of questions, which will be great.
So, um.
Everybody, Mike works at the planning department with Renata, and they, there's a big section of the Sustainable Connecticut program that really talks about things that are, and I don't mean things, but sections of how to be a sustainable town. And that really do with a lot of planning and zoning and things of that nature. So, Mike, I'm gonna hand over the floor and let you tell us what you got to know.
Thanks, yeah, so recognizing that this is my, my first time at this meeting, and with you, with you setting the table with that, I have some good news. I don't ever want to let anybody down, but I will do my best. So if things start feeling gloomy, stop me. But what I did, and so I, what I understand, Renata briefed me and kind of mentioned that the town through, through your, your group is trying to obtain the Sustainable CT certification, which obviously is a significant undertaking, and as Patty mentioned, there is a number of components in the application process or the certification process that overlap with the planning department. So what I did, or what we sort of talked about, is doing a review of the criteria to identify where that overlap is so that we can find areas where there may be things that are already gonna generate points, or that we can determine dovetail nicely with things we're already doing so that we're not adding work, right? You have probably seen this. You're not gonna go through and do every single thing on this list. You'd be here for the next 50 years, so if there's things that we're already doing.
Mike.
Yeah, I know. So, one of the things that we, we can do is help identify areas where those points are already being captured or can easily be captured. So with that, I, I went through sort of the, the first column in the Sustainable CT Action Workbook, or whatever they want to call it.
I got mine here.
Extra points for you. So, so what I did was pulled out the ones that I think segue, go ahead.
Would these be items that you think that we could get done by next, the end of next July?
So by July of 2023?
Correct. Or at least get started, but what are the ones that we really want to look at that we could get done for 2023? I don't know if you set your talk that way, but if you could either do that at a separate time, that would be really important because the next cutoff is March, well, that, we know that's not happening. And so the next cutoff after that, I always use July 30th, but I think it's like the 3rd of August. It's just a very esoteric date that they pick. But we would need to have everything done, and then we have a couple of weeks to make sure we got everything submitted.
Right.
I mean, they can be done anytime during that period, so go ahead. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
I've, um, so I'm, I work part-time with the town. I'm a consultant, so I work in a number of towns, though I, in my former life, I worked as the assistant planner in Newington for about four years, so I am familiar with the community, and I, and I understand kind of what is in place, what, what's been done. And my, my perspective on this entire process, which could be flat out wrong, would be that we need to identify, we being, I guess, the town, the stuff that we absolutely aren't doing and won't do, and sort of cross that off the list, and I think that will help inform the things that we may be on the fence about and whether or not we can get them done. So to your point about schedule, yes, most of the things that I see here could be implemented in that time, the caveat being regulatory changes, you're at the mercy of wetlands, or TPZ, or council, and priorities change, you know, depending on what's going on. But, but from a regulatory standpoint, there is more than enough time. Though perhaps the longest duration thing that I saw in the planning realm was the Affordable Housing Plan, which the town has. Affordable Housing Plan?
Oh, my goodness, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that one, and I don't know what the housing committee's doing right now, so.
Yeah. So I, I, in pulling them out quickly and not reading the, the four and five columns that go on to describe it, I feel that.
Really big one like this one.
I feel that the category that the, the planning department can provide support to get them done, or, or will be doing things, or already has to, to ultimately bring points in on the categories, which I've pulled out are 2.3 Inventory and Promote Local Products and Services, 2.4 Provide Resources and Support to Local Businesses, Development of an Open Space Plan, Implementing Low-Impact Development, Facilitating Invasive Species Education and Management, Promoting Dark Skies, Mapping Tourism and Cultural Assets, Support Arts and Creative Culture, Integrate Sustainability into Plan of Conservation Development, Adapting Permanent Processes to Promote Sustainable Development. So all of those things have subcategories, which I think we can very, very feasibly pull points down for.
Right, I mean, if they may have one air, one topic, for lack of a category, or however you want to say it, but there might be seven or eight pardon me, subcategories. And while the whole section could be worth 50 points, we may, maybe only can qualify this round with 10 or 30 or whatever. That's what I, I agree with you. If it, this is not something we're gonna discuss, we cross it off the list. We don't spend any more breath today, or tomorrow, or whatever, on the items we're not doing. And that's okay, because guess what? Not anybody who's gotten either Bronze Award or the Silver Award has done everything on the list. We just have to do one subcategory per the 13, 12 categories. So yes, we gotta do something about housing, but we might be able to get that out of human services. Because it's not a regulatory thing. It has to do with more, you know, other types of opportunities. There are areas where it kind of just goes the entire what do you call that, spectrum of, from, from different areas, so. But I do agree with you. If, if you think that it's a cross-off thing, then we gotta get this list put together so that we can all start to focus. I mean, I started focusing on some really easy things, and after Mike, you're done, I'm sorry, I took, took, took away a few minutes. We're all gonna meet Karen, who is gonna help us also. So let's, Mike, go ahead, finish up.
So, yeah, I think that from a strategy perspective and getting this done, you know, and getting it sort of, pursuing it in the timeframe that you've identified, you know, looking at some of these, there may be two or three things which, which you can very easily get done, which equate to 10 points, and one thing which may take three months for the same 10 points, so that's a strategy thing, right? What can we get done? So, so I think I'm not Renata, and I'm, again, this is my first time here, so my thoughts are, as someone who has, has no vote or leverage or anything, would be from, from the planning department's perspective, I could, I could probably pull together or extract the items from the list, which I think the planning department can provide support on, you know, in a manner to get you points for July submission.
That's where I would personally, and Renata and I have been going over this, I think, over a year now.
Yep.
But one of the things is by being very focused on what the planning, because I can't just walk into planning. I mean, I have a good guess of my opinion, because I go to, I go to your meetings, even though I might be quiet. I listen, I try to make sense out of it, so, which is anybody who is sitting on this wonderful list of, of the time they give outside of this meeting to attend the others and get some ideas as what, what goes on. I think that's really, really crucial, because if we get those done, then the only thing that we do the next time around for this thing is updates. And we all love doing updates, because they're short and sweet, as opposed to having to do something from quote, scratch. So Mike, I think it's really a very thoughtful method about getting together on this.
Yeah, so on my end, what I will do is I will sync up with Renata. I'll explain to her that I, I have sort of committed to extracting from this list of, you know, 350 wonderful options, how I think we can help, and then I will, I'll put together something to sort of summarize those, those pieces, some of which are already being implemented, one of them, I mean, the business roundtable.
There's some that are done, but they're not done in a manner that is written well, or in a place where we pull a document and say, here, read it. And the letter, a document is, could be as simple as an email that expands the knowledge base of the reader. And that then satisfies the items here. And the reason I'm looking at anything that looks from my perspective and knowing how they're, I mean, this has been around for about four years. And so they have been ramping up the types of things that they say is a sustainable. So if we want to get this voluntary award and look good among all the other towns around us, and that's, that's a, that's a good thing to do. Mike, one thing I just do want to point out, and that's for anybody, when you go to the site, and Mike, I need, I don't know if you have, I have your email. Would, would it be Mike D@newington.CT?
M.D'Amato, yeah, just like everybody else's, first initial, last name.
Okay, good, okay. Because I'm on, I'll point out a couple of things so that you don't spend any more precious time on things that, like you say, you're not gonna do, which can be like, yeah, like it's some, God knows, hundreds of pages of stuff. If we can ignore it, then we're gonna make that note about ignoring, and then we're gonna move on. Because there's plenty there, and there's so much, there's even one item that was done over the weekend through the town clerk's office when they had their shredding event in the, in the, in the front yard, or the backyard of the, or front yard, depending on your point of view, in the town hall this past weekend. And so, but we get it documented over here, so we can put that together. It's an event that adds up. We pick up points. And no one had to do anything, you know, really a big deal, just gather the data and write it up. And I, and I mentioned to anybody here that when we're working on this, if you can gather all the data, I will sit down and write it, and then you'll do the corrections, and we'll then put it in the files, and we'll move on to the next item. But we do have, and that's, well, that's what I was working on, is things that I know that we're done with. But it's not on the website, or it's not done with X, Y, or Z, or it's something of this nature. And then it's, talk to people, we get the information, and before you know it, like, Mr. Hillman is probably gonna come in first place of having things done, because I've been bugging him for a while. Which is, but we just get it done, we, we look good, it's where it can be reached, and these are the things that will be important for planning also. Because the planning department is really big, so go ahead. Anything more?
So what I will do is I will pull those things out and just hit a brief, you know, sentence or two, to sort of describe it on just the planning department functions, you know, pull out the ones that are relevant and annotate them, and I will pull some type of summary together so that you folks have it for your next meeting.
That would be fine. And, and no, if, if you want to call me at any time, I'll send you an email, make sure you have all my contacts. You just pick up the phone and call me. I unfortunately am not working anymore. I've been a little bit under the weather, you might say. So I'm usually available, and with, you know, if you're going, well, call me, as long, since you're not a commission member, it won't constitute, like, remember, all, if the four of us are together, it constitutes a meeting, it has to be official, we have to follow the rules. Otherwise, we, we will be in a position of ooh, a lot of FOIs going around this past week or so here in town, so we want to stay as clean as possible. And that's all I have. I mean, Mike, welcome aboard.
Thanks, and I'll.
What was your first point of view as, when you started to look at this enormous thing of paper?
Exactly that.
And because you have experience in other towns.
Yeah, it, in, in the other communities that I have worked with and for, it is very much a group effort, you know, where you're, you're gonna go through and have to identify, you know, which departments and which groups can can easily pull down those points with a group like this, sort of marshaling through the process and managing who's doing what, and, I mean, if you look at that list, and you start, and you start summarizing the 325 points and putting them into various buckets, you've got, you've got regulatory stuff with the council, you've got things that facilities needs to look at. So you have different departments that, that are all gonna contribute, and so, you know, you guys are basically the big summarizers that are gonna gather all that data and figure out how to pull it together. It's a big lift.
Also, if you, there's a shorter version of that list, and if you go down the bottom of that list, it will tell you the other towns who got that, who had submitted, how you found that.
I've seen it, I have the full list open, but yeah, I have seen that list.
Okay, because I would recommend, when, when we decide, getting this list kind of done, which I'd like to see if we can at least have a draft, doesn't have to ever be done, but a draft, if we can get a draft done by, that's why I say, you know, be my guest and call me, if we can get a, a bit of a draft done for, um, it would be ideal, the end for our report in November, but by our December meeting. Because some of this stuff is, we might have a bunch of things already completed, and I know we do just on events. Because Joyce, we can, we can roll back and get the 2021 upcycling event to count for these points. Because they're actually expanded the backward book. And the first time we do this is to pick up points from up to three years before.
And what about the booth we had with the climate change?
I'm gonna be contacting everybody, and instead of, you know, here, this is what you gotta put it on this sheet, you send this, then, then hopefully we got a picture or two, and then guess what? We're done. Check it off. Then we had the same one. Now Karen, I know we'll have, we can go back into 2000, we're in 22. So 21, when they had those first couple of, what do you call them? The pickup litter events, so we can get those in. We're gonna pick up for events alone, 15 points, there's not a doubt, we're done. That, it's just a matter of timing that is gonna go on, and we'll have enough events in that area. I mean, we can always do more.
How about the air pollution center?
Um, I'm not sure how that would work, but don't worry, we've got enough points. I would rather use that someplace else. If we can make it work in someplace else, we got more than enough room for events. And we can make the point, so why put it there when it can actually do better in another area? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, um, Mike, being not a commission member, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we will discuss this a little bit longer, because I'd like to. Are you, Karen? Thank you for stopping in tonight. Mike, are you, you guys know each other?
Do, do I know who? Sorry, I didn't.
Karen Galuccio. Oh, yeah, we have to now go Karen S. and Karen G.
Yeah, I, I know Karen.
Excellent. Well, everybody would like to introduce you to Karen Galuccio. She is now a, what do you call it, like a floater? She's a, she's a person who actually worked out of Parks and Rec for a very long time. Has a lot of great information and knowledge about all of that area, which that brings some, you know, really great things to our committee. And she will be primarily focusing, as Mike is, on Sustainable Connecticut. So we had a wonderful conversation a couple of weeks ago, and we are just starting to pull together, well, I'm pulling together what I think is the easy stuff that we can get done, and we could probably get done easy stuff, 75, 80 points in the next two months. Because it's already done, it's just not written up. So, you know, gotta have a, if we don't have a picture, go get a picture. We don't have it written up in a little document, let's write it up and get it done. And that's, those are the things that will kind of start pushing this stuff away, and then the stuff that. And that's, those are the things that will kind of start pushing this stuff away. And then the stuff that's going to take longer. As we all know, there's some really heavy stuff in there. And I mean, not heavy like. Weight wise, but. It will, it will have to do with changes either by. The. Planning. Board. Getting permission and or getting approval through the town council. Is, am I kind of correct there, Mike?
Sorry, what was that? I, I lost you for a sec.
Oh, sorry. I was gonna say, um, for certain things that like affect planning. Those can be heavy topics that would be not something that you take care of in a couple of months. You. Will need um council approval um. And things of that nature, which literally is just. March the timeout on the. Calendar before they can get done. And we're gonna, are we gonna fit in our? In the time that we're imposed on us to apply for this.
Right, yep. So that, yeah, so I'll try to. I, I, in that. Sort of explanation or narrative or or analysis, I'm going to try to include some information to help prioritize those things. So, so. My, my goal in closing will be that if you don't meet your deadline of wanting this drafted by December, it won't be because of the planning department. So I will, I will do my best.
I like that her. Um, because I think there's some. Quite a bit of the items that I saw in the planning department. Uh, around the, the big list and going. Planning, and that's my first. This is my very first copy, so it's very old. And it's not up to date. And I was spending the weekend. Trying to get it up to date um with the new list because this. Big fat list changes every year. Not by a lot. But they do a pretty good job in telling you what changed. But it will. I mean, we can find out. In this document. Or the, the shortened version is who did it before? What did they do? And we don't reinvent the wheel if it doesn't need to be. I'm not saying you were cheating at all, but. Several towns did. Here, here's, here's something very simple, which has a lot more to do with Joe over in facilities. Which won't be prolonged because then he's got to play town manager for a while. Is that. Dark skies. Right? Do we all know what dark skies are? It means that we don't have our lights in our yards and in our buildings. And for us, our town buildings. And that includes board at buildings. Where the. Where the outdoor lighting lights the sky and not the ground. We want them. Because we don't want the light going up there into no mail that. We want to bring it down. We don't want to be shining it into. The guy down next door. And making his life miserable because now there's these big bright lights showing up. Um, and that type of stuff. It, it's a policy. Write it down. And then we have a list already of all the buildings. And so somebody needs to just. Say, yeah, this is, this building's done that. And they're, they ask you um this stuff, you just write it down. Not me or you necessarily. But I, Joe said, no problem. If he needed some help, I said, that's fine. We got some help. And so you can sit down and you make the little list. We look good. Guess what? And I'm not saying that'll take ten minutes, but it will be done in no time because. We have all the pieces. And a lot of that, a lot of these small stuff. And there's five points. Um, and if somebody goes, well, it's all about points. Well, we're trying to get an award. And anybody who's ever applied for awards, and Lord knows I've applied for quite a few. You gotta, you gotta do what they're looking for. So uh, we will, we will go through and we will put that together. Uh, and Joyce, I did just remember there is a spot and I can't tell you where. Because I'd have to spend some time to read again about. Clean air. So um, I have to see how that. Fits in because that's really important. And we even have a committee and we have. Information and stuff. And this year we're doing a lot more. So we have history, three years that we can plug in and then what we're doing today. So that there is something there. I was pleased to read that. It takes a little while to. Be able to put all these pages in your head. And. When somebody says something, cross-reference it to what department here in town. Now, uh, Mike, I'm glad you said one thing and I'll, and I'll let you go, but I think it's really important. It's not just a town thing. We need to involve. They. We're, well, I look around and excluding Karen and 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 um. And Mike and 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 Rob. They're all town people, town employees. And the rest of us are commissioners or volunteers. And are both actually. And uh. I'll give him a second. We need to continue to involve because we know how difficult it is, but we need to continue to involve and bring people in. Um, and get them involved and get them interested in how these types of things. Not all they won't agree, but some of them really will help make a difference to the town of Newington. Hold on, I'm machine monster reboot. That's not going to be allowed. Okay. But anything else, Mike? I wanted to say thank you so much. You, you've done a great job in preparing.
No worries. Um, I'll get started on that and I'll get it over to you and uh, thanks for having me.
Now, thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
Um, and Karen, um, why don't you give them a, any, any, a little bit of background when we were talking about Parks and Rec about who you do, what you, what you know about um. How they have made a difference in um some of the sustainable stuff that's going on. I mean, some of the events that are going on are tremendously involve a lot of our. Friends and families, you might say. I don't say it as well as Bill, I know.
Hi, I'm Karen Galicio. I actually worked in the Parks and Rec Department. I was a rec supervisor for fourteen years. And um. As Patty knows, we did do a, what we do, one of the things we do every year. I say we, but no longer about there. Um. Is the garden plots and we had a. Wonderful event, but unfortunately it was too long ago to be able to use it for this certification. Where we had, actually, we had somebody come in and speak about some things and we. We just did a nice program there, but that would be something that we could do. Um, one of the events that. Patty was just talking about was um Commissioner Foley was talking about was. The shredding event that occurred over the weekend. And um. James gave me a couple of um. Points of um interest. We had about seventy-seven people show up. And it was approximately uh fifteen to seventeen hundred pounds of. Recycling uh materials. And um.
I got that much at my house.
You should have been there. Should have come to the.
Well, might, might have to be shredded differently with a lot of security. So.
Yeah, I was not at the event.
And as, as a business person, I couldn't, I couldn't really. One, I didn't qualify. Because I can't bring my business mail. I have to bring my personal mail. So I, I, I play by the rules. Most, most of the time. Go ahead.
But um. I actually didn't plan on having to speak at this meeting. I was just um. Asked by Patty to, to come to the meeting. So um. I would just, I was curious as to know when we're actually going to have a, just a sustainable. Meeting.
Um, great question. When? Um, well, that.
Who would be at that meeting?
I mean, for. As long as there's not four commissioners. In the meeting. We can meet anytime we want. We can meet during the day because I, well, I would want to see if Mike would be available, you would be available. Um, other than the time I have to go on Thursdays to a doctor appointment. I try to make all my appointments on Thursday because it just. Makes life um so much easier to manage for me. Anybody else who wants to do that, or if we do. Late afternoon. Are we still on? Uh, we, listen to me. I just decided to join the team here. Um, are we still on? The, the special hours for the summer? And will that continue?
All we know is that it's going to be going through December, the end of December. Right now, that's as far as we know.
Oh, okay. So, so the summer hours are going to now be fall and into early winter.
Yes, they were extended to December thirty-first.
Okay. Okay. All right. So um, how about what we do is once I have this little list kind of more cleaned up. Send out a note. Now, one other thing about um. F O I and. Um, meeting protocols. If you send out one, you can copy everybody. But only the person it's written to should be responding. Everybody else should be listed as a um. Like the C C. We all know what that is. Because then the minute they all become twos, then we all had a meeting. Okay. Yeah, I know. I know this sounds like really tough stuff. But it, it's the rules and. We just don't want to spend, waste any of our important time. Having to defend rules as opposed to um. Uh, getting something accomplished because your, your opportunities um that you have. So um, Karen, I'm glad you're aboard. I'm, I'm actually really quite excited. Now, there we are. So uh, between all of us, I think we are going to be um. I, I'm starting to feel a little positive. I'm hoping that the changes at town hall. Obviously, um, with the, the town manager moving on. That everything, we, we can get this done. One, because, you know, he wanted to see it done. And more so. It looks good for Newington and that's a good thing. And we can now start to tell people more about Newington, which is. You know, we all think it's great, but. It could be even better. And I think, you know, this is one of the areas. But, um, but thank you for taking the time and being with us. Make sure you mark it down. So, because I know you, your time has been limited what we can spend. So you let us know where we're at. And then we can. I want everybody happy. Because. I'm a happy kind of lady. Well, kind of, sort of. And uh. But we should have fun with this and involving. Other people, they'll want to be more involved if they see us all laughing and smiling and having a good time and realizing going, wow, I didn't know that. And you'd be surprised. I ask people about certain things in town. They go, I didn't know we did that. I didn't know we did that. I said, ah. We're going to be looking, one of the items that we have here is to look at is how we commute, how. We, the town. Um, so you'll have your commissioner hat for one time. You'll have the town employee hat. And then you'll have the public hat. So. For us commissioners, we actually have three hats. That we kind of wear and um, we'll go from there. Doesn't mean you're doing everything that everybody else is doing. You're going to do the items where you find that you have the most passion, that that is really important. But. Uh, I'm excited to invite Karen because I've known her for a long time. And uh, now it's like I have the, I have the pleasure to work with her and and that young Mike who is here. I had met him a while ago, so that's, that's great. And of course, I've known all of you and uh. Oh, yeah, I'm Rob too. Anything else? Um, and we can go on from Sustainable Connecticut. Um, as soon as I have my list, hopefully we'll have it by the end of next week of the items. All of you as commissioners. Can go online. And go in and look at it. Karen, I, I think I, you should have gotten already. Online and you'll go in at, into the. Sustainable Connecticut where you can actually read it online instead of having this big kind of paperwork. Because this is really not fun. Um, but you can be able to look there and see what other towns have done or what we like. I didn't know we did that. And we'll go from there.
Patty, I might need to call you offline because I'm having trouble with the Dropbox.
All right. Well, you, you just let me know and we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, no one be, if you're, if you and I are the only people on the phone call. I mean, I talked to Rob, I hang the phone up. It's only two people. We don't have the worry, don't have, you don't. If I think we're in a worried position about a meeting. Or it should have been a meeting, I will be telling people that. Because the last thing I want to do is fight with anyone over something as stupid. It was just. This is a rule. We just got to follow it. Okay, so you pick up the phone, give me a call.
Thank you.
Don't worry, you might wake me up. But then. Don't worry. I have plenty of time to sleep later. Okay. Okay, let's move on because we want to keep this meeting moving. But I'm really thank you for, um, does anybody um. Else have any questions about the sustainable thing? Because you'll all be quote copied in. Um, and if you do have questions that you're working on something, then we'll go from there. Nothing good, we'll move on. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sarrio. Our, our Facebook page keeps adding a couple of people.
Yes, that, that's about it. Uh, it is a few people each month. Um, but we're going in the right direction. It's not going down.
It takes a while.
It does. Yeah. So it's about five people um a month. Um, we're at two sixty-seven now. Um, and uh, it's, you know, slowly going up about, like I said, five people a month.
If, do you want? Since you're, you're kind of doing that job there. Do you want um? When they sign up? Do we want to make sure that we say thank you, welcome, anything of that nature? Because that's the kind of stuff I can do in the background.
I would love that. If you're able to do that, that would be great.
Now, I want you, because I want you, every time you look at this. We want to use the social media, not just to blast out something and throw it out there in a plate. No. It's to start some interaction. Okay, so that's just, if it's. If you know the Patty, these are the five people. Well, okay, I'll, I'll send them a, kind of, I'll, for lack of a better term, a wel, a welcome letter. And, and see if they're interested in helping out with anything on uh. Sustainable Connecticut because they don't have to join the commission. We love some people, but. We can go from there. So if, if, I mean. We all have a. Our challenges every day. But if it's something that, remember, how does it look from the. Perspective of the person in the. In the public. We all have to kind of think that way. Just because we do tag your it. Doesn't really foster us to have a communication back and forth. And that's what we wanted to do. We want to try to get the communication to move up. I mean, in, in, in a good, positive and educational way when they go, I didn't know we did that. And we have less of that and more of. Oh, wow, we do that. Um, and and from turning that around, I think it takes a while. Um, it's not something happens overnight. So we can go from there. But. Thank you again for following up. I think I found you a couple of pictures.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And everyone is welcome to uh, to join the page if you're not already a member and uh, contribute on the page, of course. More, the more the better. I appreciate that.
Excuse me, my probably is very, very dry today. Okay. Um, can we move on? Thank you there. Okay. Um, where am I? Hold on a second. I've had, I've had, I've had a moment here. Okay. I don't know exactly where I am, but I'll, before it will shake out. Physicians on the commission. Okay, so we have. The four of us and we have three open physicians. I was praying that I did get, um, I offered. I was praying that I did get, I offered someone to, to think of joining us. The woman who was on, who got put on the, what should you call it, Jean, she thought, she didn't realize that she had to actually send in a resignation letter to the town clerk, town council. She thought by telling me it was sufficient, and I said, no, the rules say. So she's sending in hers, so we can have an official paper trail. And that's fine. I off, there's a guy who actually lives right behind me at Woods Edge. And he works for the hauler in the one we use. Now, always, right, Rob?
Trash away.
But I just saw an always truck on our street.
Um, not sure why. They are a hauler in town, but they're not a, they don't take care of the town's waste.
Okay, they don't take any municipal, so they could be, okay, I got you. But anyway, he, he, he works in, for always now, and knowledgeable kind of guy. Our garbage, I didn't know this, but, but he did, before I go on to that, because it's a nice little piece of, you know how we get those trivia pieces of knowledge? But his wife works on, on Thursday evening until almost the time we resign, and he has a little girl at home, so it's, it's daddy daughter night. So I said, well, times change, and we welcome him to come back, but knowledgeable guy, just lovely to talk with. So he says, but if he could do something, he might. So if we have events that are going on, I'm going to make sure we, we involve him and let his, his name, his name is Mike Obwan. But I think he could be, if he got questions or so forth, but he did say, and I didn't know this, so whoops, on me. The garbage, not the recycling, but the garbage goes to Hartford, right, Rob?
Yes, it goes to Murphy Road Recycling in Hartford.
Okay. Well, guess what? Then they take it and they put it on, in a train, in a train car, and it's then trained out of Hartford.
That is correct, ever since Mira was decommissioned as a burn plant, the, there is no longer, our waste no longer gets burned, it all gets shipped off.
Right, and nothing goes in a truck, everything is going by a train out of state.
Oh yes, it's all on rail, yes.
Well, I just never thought of that as an option, I thought they just refilled trucks and they trucked them away, and no. So that was kind of an interesting little, again, little tidbits about who we are and how that is a much more efficient way to move a lot, because it's not just our garbage, but the other towns that are still dumping there. So we're tipping, tipping there. Okay, so we have open, I also had a question, and I wrote to the town to the mayor regarding, again, certain individuals attendance, or lack thereof. And I said, well, we can't do anything good about it, and at this moment, is, is, can she maybe, you know, roll through her people that she knows and see if she might find somebody? I'm, I'm going to put, I put a quick email out to, to the Democratic County Committee, because that's where the seats are open to. I wish we didn't have to deal with who belongs to what party, because this is not about being in a party, this is about taking care of Newington. So, but I sent them her list, she's, she's a good friend, and I'm waiting for a return from her, and then who was the other one? I haven't sent that one to the other party, so I'll be sending that out. And see, come on, go through your roster of people that you know and see what we can find. So everybody here, if you think you know someone, but you don't want to ask them, I will ask for you, okay? Because I know sometimes it's hard to, like, get on that kind of conversation, but let me know who they are, and we'll move on. Okay. Next, Commissioner Sarrio. The litter pickup citizen group, gee, this is a perfect example of Sustainable Connecticut, go ahead.
Yes, and I, I've been keeping track of all of that. I have it ready to go to, to insert when ready into the Sustainable CT website. At this point, I don't have any further details, but I should have details by the end of October, which I'll share at our November meeting.
Okay, perfect. And I think I have one of the ones from the year back that we can actually use to carry forward.
Great.
We'll be able to do it once, but that's all we have to do.
Sounds good.
So let me just make a note this, look at prior year. Okay. That's perfect. Because as she picks a couple up here and a couple up here, because I know we'll get to the point, it's too cold. And then we'll have several months off, and then we'll be able to probably do some in the spring, and if we anticipate it, then we can anticipate our numbers. I, I, I know, I'm going to be one of those, I'm a number cruncher, I apologize, it's, it was born into me. But let's go on. Anything more? Any questions for Commissioner Sarrio? Then Commissioner Bunkel, you're on. How is it going with the air?
The Ball for TillCon meeting will be, the annual meeting will be Monday, October 17th, at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall, Room 104.
Okay, will it be also any, any a Zoom meeting?
Um, not to my knowledge, I don't think so.
That's too bad.
I, I think all meetings still have to be in person and Zoom, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that's what the town is doing.
Okay, so there's an, okay. Well, they, they, by now would have had to put it on the town website. Right? About the meeting?
I don't know.
Okay.
I, um,
The reason I'm, I, it's usually in the agenda about what the, like, if you look at the top of our agenda, it says Zoom meeting guest details are here, and here's the date and time. Because that's the way we have it right now.
I do know, in the past, the town manager was at those meetings, so I don't know who will be replacing him at this meeting, but anyway, again, it's Monday, October 17th, 6:30 PM at the Town Hall, Room 104. And I emailed Barbara.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I emailed Barbara regarding having the silica content measured, because that's, that's the big, that's the biggie with pollution. And she said she was waiting to hear from Connecticut, OSHA. I don't know why or how she's involved in Connecticut OSHA, but anyway, yeah, that's, we need, we need the silica content measured in the pollutants. And then, in the past, I have said EPA is not concerned about any pollution unless you have a reading over 50 for 24 hours. And I have not, I've seen many readings over 50, 150, 250, 350, but not for 24 hours. Well, anyway, today, Purple Air data showed a 24-hour period with a reading of 53. A six-hour reading was 60. And right here, if, when you go to the, when, if, when you go to the website, right here, in this box, down at the bottom, it tells you the averages. We had today a one-hour average of 54. We had a six-hour average of 60. And we had a one-day average of 53. Not good.
Nope. Now, so, may I ask a question, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Has this commission, the, this, or this committee ever done this kind of testing, and we be, going to be reporting on this?
Has this, no, no.
Not us, I mean, not us, I mean, the, the Ball TillCon Committee. Have they actually done this testing before?
No, 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 this is why, this is how it all got started. Because at the last meeting, I asked, has the air quality in the neighborhood outside of the quarry been tested? It had not been tested. OSHA tests inside the quarry for employee purposes. And I said, that's fine, inside the quarry, I'm questioning the air outside of the quarry. And that's how this whole thing got started, because the town manager actually said to the health department person, maybe we should look into measuring the pollutants outside of the quarry, hence the sensor. So that was how the whole thing got started. So Barbara said that she saw a few times in July, there were high 24-hour readings. She said the numbers are high when the wind is from the south, southwest, along with higher wind speeds. So I'm not sure where she is getting the wind direction or the wind speeds from, when I see her at the meeting on Monday, I guess I will ask her.
And I think that's a great question.
There's, there's still a lot of variables, and we only have the one sensor. I do have data showing that Newington readings are sometimes high when all the surrounding towns are low. I don't want to point the finger at the quarry and say, you're the guilty party, we need more evidence, we need more data.
Right, you're not seeing a consistent or something consistent, and, and that's, that's fine, and it would be nice to have a smoking gun, like, literally. Boom, done. But that's not happening.
Well, I'm, I'll get to that later on, under new business. But anyway, for now, yeah, we have the meeting on Monday, we do have readings over 50, and that's where we stand right now.
Okay, excellent. I, I don't think this committee has ever heard as much information regarding this as we have, since you have taken it under your arm, and I appreciate it. Anything more, any questions for anybody from anyone regarding this? And yes, and we're going to find the spot that's going to fit in for Sustainable Connecticut. So as long as you got, you just document away, and then we'll make it look good. Okay. Anyone else? Alright, so, under the event area. Okay. The essay contest and posters thing, I just, I just could not get it, it's been a soon as I, I keep looking for more volunteers, because I know that will help us in the long run. And I'm sure we can do more there, but I do want to hear about a most successful waterfall festival. So Commissioner Sarrio and Commissioner Bunkel, thank you for doing so much up in the background.
And I'll let Commissioner Bunkel start, since you got us started with the application, and there you go with the pictures, excellent.
Yay.
I think, I mean, we, more, I think, more than what I expected, more than what I wanted to accomplish, was accomplished that day. I mean, our goal was to educate the public about climate change. And I think we exceeded that goal, and I think it, it, it was, it was excellent. It was excellent.
Good, so I will wait, get you the little report, we take a page just like this, we got, we got them showing it started, I think it's perfect. And we've got another set of, another event that will add to our event area, and then we can always grow from there into whatever we do, so thank you. It was, it was a great day, and I really appreciate the effort with, with everybody helping out.
Absolutely, I just, oh, go ahead, Joyce.
And then I asked Karen, I said, make some notes for next year, what we did right, what we did wrong, so we can improve upon the booth next year.
Well, and that is actually one of the questions in the Sustainable Connecticut worksheet, is what did you learn? Because you want to compound, like, when Joyce did the upcycle, and everything became easier the second year around. It was maybe the wrong timing for it, but, you know, we'll see about that. I mean, put that aside for the time being. It made everything move so much easier, simpler, and, 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 because we, like I said, we don't reinvent the wheel, we do it right. Or however we anticipate it, and then say, okay, you know, we, we could have added this, or take away that, and go from there. But thank you very much, I'm really glad that we were there.
Yeah, I just wanted to add briefly, to, to Commissioner Bunkel's thoughts, that there was over 70 people that stopped by, and we know
Seven, or seven zero.
Seven zero. And we know that because Joyce had two different questionnaires or quizzes, Quiz A and Quiz B, and had 25 of each of those, and I ran out and had you know, it obviously kind of kept track of the additional people that came. It was fun, families and friends competed against each other by their own choice. Oh, I'm going to do A, you do B, let's see who gets more. So it was, it was fun, people voluntarily took on that challenge within the challenge, and everybody learned something, it was, it was great to hear. There were a couple of, of people that I added to our Facebook page, and I'm hopeful will show up at, at a future meeting. I will send you those, those names, Joyce, I'm, I'm sorry, to, to Patty for a future welcome, as you, as you'd like, and it was definitely a successful event. Joyce, you are our project manager, thank you for, for getting us started with so many successful events, I really appreciate your help.
Yeah, it really, it does make a difference, and everything we learn, I, I think the, and I, I just want to compliment on it, that, from what I'm listening to, is I guess I really like to have a bit of a contest. And that's kind of a fun thing, we all like to win something, so keep going, I think this will be an opportunity to do a bunch of stuff, and I tell you, the hardest part of not feeling well is not being able to go to places. And it really, and going, I, I am dying to hear what happened, I'm like, biting my pen to the end and wondering, so when I heard from Joyce, and I heard from both Karen, thank you, it was, I was very pleased. And that, that is not bad for something called a waterfall festival chalk contest, to have them taking over and being excited about Newington's quality commission, so this is excellent, thank you. And you don't know, you probably planted some seeds. Did we, did we get addresses or email addresses from any of the folks who came?
No, but that's a great enhancement. No, but that's a great enhancement for next year.
Okay, well, just write it down then. Um, because these are the things that we learned. Because the next event we do, not only did we write how many people, but if we have an opportunity, if they'd like more information, you're not saying we're going to do it, but if they'd like more information, why don't you sign up with your name and your email address? And we promise we will not bombard you. And, and we'll go from there. So when we have an event, uh, which is, when I looked at the timing of the the shredding event, the timing of that notice was three days in advance. And if you wanna throw paper out, you need a little more time, unless you've been saving. Now, um, and like I said, well, I wrote to both you and to Karen, now we'll pull some information together. The one thing is, I know there's gonna be one, or there could be one in the spring. But we need to tell people in advance so that they, they, they show up. Um, but.
Patty?
The fact that they did show up, that was fabulous.
Patty?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things I, um, plan on doing next year is, um, when people take the climate change quiz, on the back of the quiz paper will be some information about the, um, Environmental Quality Commission as well as, as well as what they can do to fight climate change. So they'll have a takeaway. They'll, they'll be able to take that, the quiz away, see what questions they got right, see what questions they got wrong. They flip it over and they learn about the Environmental Quality Commission. And they learn about what they can do to fight climate change. So that's on my to-do list for next year.
That, that, that would be, and, and I, and take that idea for anything new we try and do between now and next year for something else. We can always do that. I think that's a perfect way, um, to introduce people gently. Making someone change their behavior is a big deal. And, and, um, I, I had long discussions with one of my brothers. And he's going.
So about what?
It's difficult to change a neighbor.
That one piece of paper that they can take with them will be highly informative and educational.
Yeah, and, and an opportunity where we can get them to, if we can collect a name and a, and an email, um, even if it's just a checklist of saying, my name, my email, and I'm most interested in food, or I'm interested in homelessness, or I'm interested in these areas, then we can find something that will help them too. Even if it means putting them on a different committee or a different avenue, is, but we've involved our public, and that's really key. And, uh, if, if we can be the catalyst that expand our volunteerism around town, that in itself is gonna make for a better environment. So, um, Joyce, I think it's a great idea. Thank you. All right, do we have anything more? Congratulations on a great event.
I did wanna add one more thing. Um, we definitely, we definitely need more support. Uh, um, I, I somehow thought I could sit there for five hours by myself. Um, and I would not recommend that, and I will not be able to do that again. Um, so we definitely need, need more, more assistance.
Well, we have, we have a whole year to the next. And we have a chance of always thinking about, like, I know social media is not the biggest thing in the world, but look at what we look like, or stand back and try to look at what we do. So somebody's gonna say, yeah, I wanna, I wanna hang out. I wanna be here. I want, this is gonna be fun. Um, and, and that is the hardest thing, to have them cross the line and say, well, because I even said to Mike, well, if you can't, the guy who said no for the commission seat. And I said, he goes, but Patty, if you've got a question or you want some, um, type of info, I'll go get it. That I can do. And I said, okay. So he might not be able to be a commissioner, but he'd be helpful on certain types of events. And that, and I tell you, that's one step closer. Okay, let's move on.
Good, good job, everyone.
Thank you, Joe. Our number-one garbage man, Mr. Hillman.
Um, I don't really have much to report, but, um, I do have a couple, um, items that Commissioner Sariah might wanna add to the Facebook page, uh, for events or an event that is coming up, the Hazardous Waste Collection, uh, this Saturday on October fifteenth at the Windsor Locks, uh, Public Works Garage. That is open to all, uh, MDC member towns, which Newington is a member of.
Is that the MDC thing?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Hazardous Waste Event. Um, so if you could put that on your Facebook page, that would be great. And then, um, every change of season, I get a notification from Simple Recycling. They are the company that picks up the textiles, um, curbside. Um, and they sent me their, or their seasonal, um, notification. So I'll pass that along to Commissioner Sariah too, and maybe she can add that to, uh, the Facebook page, uh, next week as another, uh, notification.
I mean, it can go, and if it, if it's a little bit late, it doesn't matter. It's just the fact that it goes out. In fact, I pulled out a pink bag out of the garage today. And I'm like, I, I know, I turned it inside out and stuffed it. Yeah, just so that it didn't say the name on it, but, um, um, I found a bunch of more textiles to recycle. I, I got rid of, had a bunch of stuff that was around, old yarn, or, you know, that kinda stuff that can be recycled. I think I'm somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five bags. So, uh, it's not in the garbage. We're not paying to dump it. And it's being recycled. So these, these are good things that are happening. Um, yeah, that would be really good. Do we have anything that, um, changes in the town? Well, look at that. Very nice.
All right.
Wow.
Easy way to, Jose just pulled that up. It's an easy way to.
You're, you're getting to be quite the expert.
He is, he is fantastic. I can't, I can't explain enough how much he's helped me out with these meetings.
Well, then, good, then you give him a raise, okay?
Yeah.
Jose, you stick with me. I'll make sure it works.
Excuse me, Patty?
Yes.
Excuse me, this is Karen. I, unfortunately, I need to leave the meeting.
That's okay. Are you getting a gist about what we, what we have here?
Yes.
Perfect. Then we'll just continue to, you know what we should do, um, Karen? Is that maybe you and I set, um, fifteen minutes, a half an hour, whatever, on, on a weekly basis and kinda stay. And that will allow us to stay up to date. And I'll be, I'll be juggling the, the information as where we stand close to being finished jumping. Sure, if you need, it's not so much that I need assistance. If you need assistance, you need to tell me so I can, we make it happen.
Okay.
Okay?
Fair enough.
Nobody does this alone. There's just no way. We would never be a sustainable group, country, planet if we were all doing this by ourselves. We have to do it together, so, um, if, you know, if something comes up in your life where things are a little crazy, well, that happens. I'm, I'm, I'm full telling, yeah, it happened. So, uh, let's work, let's make sure that's how we're gonna work together. And we'll have a good time. And, um, don't anybody ever feel like, oh, I couldn't do it, and I, no, no, no. Uh, we'll make it happen. Um, it just takes a little time. And I just pray to feel a little bit better, which would be helpful. And go from there. Okay, and, and thanks, um, Rob, anything else? So, uh, the, really, we, they've done all the hazardous waste pickups already, except for.
Uh, no, there's this one, and then there is, uh, one last one on the, um, oh my goodness. The following set. Jose's gonna get us the date and the location in a second.
Okay, and, and, and if you can get that and send this out now, because we can turn around and say, well, if you can't make this one, we can already give them the date for the new one and the location.
Yeah, the next one is October twenty-ninth, uh, East Hartford at their, uh, Waste Pollution Facility on Fifteenth.
Okay, so, uh, if you, yeah, put, put that together, we can send, because it doesn't have to be, um, if it goes, if, when you think about any kind of messages like this, if you think it's too early, it's not. It's when it's too late means that we don't get the coverage that we're looking for. I would rather send it out early and then do a follow, you know, schedule a follow-up that just automatically appear. I, I love how I say that. Oh, it just automatically appears, but.
Now, anybody, anybody can bring hazardous waste to any of these pickups?
Yeah, because they all belong to the Metropolitan District MDC, which is C-Stamper. I forgot. Um, there are water company, eight towns belong to this water company. That's the only towns in all of Connecticut that take part in this, other than there's, oh, I know a little bit too. But these are the member towns. These are the towns back in eighteen-eighty that came together and made this water company. There's a great, I don't know if it's still playing, um, but I'll have to, I'll check on it. There is a historical done by, uh, CPTV on how we had no clean water in Connecticut. And how we made this company and turned, because the people were dying because they kept had dysentery and all kinds of diseases. Um, but they will, um, get better. And, uh, all of a sudden, we have what we have today. And when you look around, uh, in different little caveats and in, um, or areas in Newing, uh, Newington, in Connecticut, believe it or not, there are towns in or groups of towns that actually had a watershed shortage this summer. And MDC's supply of water never bet, went below like ninety-five percent. So it, it's really heartwarming to understand how our water company is so important to us. And that's just the water we purchase. But the disposal and how much they just, you know, what they have to do to dispose of the, um, the stuff that goes through the sewer. And that, uh, with the new, the big dig they did, what that allows is that when we have rain like tonight, and we could have picked up an inch in an hour or less, um, because it's not raining anymore, at least not by my house, that water would overflow into the Connecticut River and contaminate it. And the fees and the, um, um, I can't remember the fees, but they were very expensive, aren't they, Rob? I don't know.
Yes, they, they were, yes.
But now we're doing better, and I tell you, it's very interesting. Um, so we have some, um, on NCTV, we have some, um, information and some, um, I'll find the CPTV one, because you will be unbelievably surprised what it takes to run a water company. It's not tone on the hose and you're happy. And we all are. We just don't know what goes on behind it. But they honestly work twenty-four hours a day to make sure that we have clean water.
Thank you, Patty. I, I'd be interested in, in, uh, seeing that, and I'll definitely share that on our page.
Okay, I, okay, let me write this down right now. Hold on. CPTV. Yeah, a, a, and plan it so that it's a couple of times during the year, because, but I believe, if I remember, but I've been away a little while, but I will find out the answer. Is, it is plays regularly as on a regular TV, but I believe it's also on demand. But I will get that information for you.
Right, great.
And I have some really great pictures to go with it.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, nice pictures that you can change up. And it's, uh, the, what do you call those? The reservoir is knock your socks off, so. Okay, very good. Anything more in the way, uh, for Mr. Hillman?
No, that's it.
I, I actually had something for you, Rob, briefly. I just wanted to say thank you for your suggestions, for keeping me in mind. And, um, uh, continue to send me an email as, as you come across things or as you remember, um, um, as they come up, uh, in between meetings. Um, I do plan on mentioning towards the end of the month, a few times, um, about, um, pumpkins and, and, uh, confirming that we can donate pumpkins to the, to the goats like we did last year. Um, and.
Uh, uh, could we do that again this year?
I'm gonna confirm that, and then, um, once I confirm, oh, I'm sorry, you were talking to Rob.
Um, I, oh, I have to look into that.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I dropped off my, last year I had a pumpkin, this year I didn't get a pumpkin. I'm sorry. But last year I had a pumpkin. And, um, I, um, I brought it over to the, you know, I brought it over, pulled into the driveway there and pulled, you know, pulled, put it out, we put it in the, uh, the barrel. And they, they came out of the house, they waved, they yelled, "Thank you." So apparently goats really like pumpkins. And I'm like, hey, if it meant it didn't go in the garbage pail, and that in itself, that's a lot of weight. And, and then the goat got it. So they had like great time. Anything more? Goat, gotta remember. And a, as we look at this, I think Karen, it might be a good, I, when, when maybe things are settled a little better, is we should sit down and look at what we've got accomplished over the next, over the last several months. Put that together as a type of calendar so that those who come after us will be, um, will understand, and it may give us some, oh, yeah, let's not forget this. And, oh, we could bring this up. I just did that for my LACE group. Um, they said something about, um, there was a, uh, what do you, like a podcast on a particular event. Well, the podcast, I, I skipped it. I didn't even hear it. Um, and it was in Boston, because we cover Bos, the, all of New England. And I said, how many other people in the middle of summer didn't hear the podcast? And so I got the link and we posted, reposted it. And I don't know how many people are gonna watch, but it gave us content, and it was pertinent and interesting, and actually was a nice little podcast. Um, I guess it was all about lace, and it was kinda like weird, but these are the, all of a sudden, I sat back and said, well, I didn't see it. And we know why. How many people didn't see it because they were away, or they were this or that? And so we sent that back out to our group. Um, and, and that way, when a particular item rises to that level, then what can we do? So, um, I just wanted to pass that along. Because sometimes when you get together, we, our brains try to work a little bit, and come up with ways to, you know, well, we already used it once. Well, why can't we use it again? Because that person wasn't around that week. You can't assume just because we, we don't wanna play, tag you're it. Because we won't win. And sustainability can't win. We need to keep that rolling, so. But Karen, thank you for what you have put up. I, I tried to go out there and find a little video on something, um, that I've seen. Um, because that's kinda fun to see besides a, um, a picture-type file. So, a little, a little variety goes a long way. So thank you so much.
Sure, sure. I, I'm sorry to, to ask one more question, Rob. Um, Rob, I have one more question for you. If you know, um, um, it was previously mentioned that our, uh, waste is, uh, transported out of state by train, which I am excited to hear, and not by, uh, truck, uh, or, um, a, a regular kind of, vehicle other than, you know, a train. Can you tell me if you know, um, if the trains, um, that would be, um, hauling the trash, uh, are, uh, electric or if they're coal? Hauling the trash, uh, are electric or if they're coal? If you know.
I do not know, but I can reach out to Murphy Road and see if they'd be willing to share that information.
Oh, and a picture would be great.
I can certainly try.
Most trains above Washington DC are electric. Um, because that's the way they were set up, whether it was through Amtrak. Uh, North, um, Metro North. Uh, but, and I learned that by, I, I took the train from New York to, um. I forget where I went. Oh, uh, Georgia. And, uh, standing outside on the platform, I talked to one of the conductors because, you know, I got to ask everybody a question, I want a story. And he goes, no, we changed, we changed engines, we take off the electric engine and we put on a coal engine. We don't touch, the rest of the train stays the same. But that's where that, that's generally at the time when I went. When they made the change and it was funny, you could smell the difference. From being an electric train versus the, um. Uh, the coal train. But they don't have the, the wherewithal, once you get past Washington DC or start going, um, west. Is to be able to run the electric trains. It's, it just gets wide open space and it doesn't work.
Right.
It's more expensive, apparently, to run an, oh, a, electric train. In areas that are not conducive to putting in all kinds of electric power. And of course, now that we are in a sustainable point of view, I don't know which is better. So, uh, but that's a really good question, that's an excellent question, I didn't even think of that one. Oh, this is like, we are learning some, I think we're going to have enough, Joyce, make a note about this. We could have enough to have a fun trivia quiz. About Newington. All these little things that are just interesting about where we live, because what happens here doesn't happen necessarily next door or down the road, so. I, I love, I love trivia. Because I usually fail at it, but moving on. Anything else for Mr. Hillman, Rob, thank you for all you do for us, especially when you give a night to be here with us and it was a little bit longer.
You're very welcome.
Um, do we have anybody in the public participation room?
Oh, wait a minute, you skipped new business.
We have new business, yes.
I did, I'm sorry, I was writing all over the, my agenda, Miss Commissioner Bontle, please.
Yes, I have new business. I want you to picture this.
Go ahead.
You pull into a corporate building parking lot. And, and a sign near the door says. This space reserved for employee of the month.
Okay.
You pull into Lowe's parking lot. And there's a sign saying, this space reserved for a veteran.
Say that again.
These people, these people are being rewarded for doing something good. How about if we, how about if people are rewarded for doing something good? For the earth, something sustainable.
You're making, you're making my brain blow up. This is a wonderful.
How about? How about on the Market Square parking lot? We have a sign that reads. This space reserved for hybrid or electric car. In essence, let's reward people for buying an electric or hybrid car. Maybe the idea would spread to malls and restaurants. Of course, it's going to have to be approved by the dozen town committees. Part of our, part of our job as a commission. Is to make suggestions to the town council. So how about it?
And have, do you have like a, a shortlist? Um, besides cars, anything else?
There, there are two charging stations in, in, in the municipal lot.
Correct. I, I would like. Public charging stations that are town owned, right?
I would like, I would like to add two things if I, if I may, um, I have an electric vehicle and I've used those spaces. Um, and I'm very grateful to have those spaces. Um, and, um, they work wonderfully, it's very convenient, um, obviously being in the center of town. At certain times, they're full, um, so they are getting used, so I like the idea of having. Uh, another spot or two perhaps, um, reserved for, uh, for hybrid or electric vehicles. There is a spot, um, behind the church that's across the street, behind the Church of Christ Congregational Church. There's a spot in the business OFI.
Yes.
And they have, they have a spot like Joyce is describing, uh, if anybody, uh, would like to take a picture of the spot. Uh, as an example that is for hybrid, uh, vehicles, uh, or green vehicles.
Okay, um, actually, uh, tonight, I went with, um, or before our meeting, I was with a, a friend of mine and she got a brand new car, it's, um. A Honda hybrid something, the one that has blue, like little signs on the car. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not very car oriented today, but it was very interesting. And it was funny because. Um, I, I couldn't believe how quiet. The car was when we weren't going anywhere. And it just kind of shut all down, nice and quiet. While we waited, looking at the ugly. Light poles in the, down the center of, of, uh. Newington down there and, uh, in the turnpike, um, and it was. It wasn't hard. Uh, it was, it was very easy, it was, um. Very nice automobile. And I think people need to see and realize, um, that they are good. But I like the idea of. Rewarding either a person or a business or something. Um, and there are people. Not only municipal. That we've got two. But there are several businesses with, um, I know the electric company down on Payne Road. Oh. Newington Electors. He's got one there and it, it's, it's about everybody kind of moving together. We got good old. Department of Transportation with their twenty charging stations on the Berlin Turnpike. Now, I don't know anything about them and. I'll admit, I could have missed something in the newspaper, but I didn't hear a thing about any hoopla about the station.
I don't want, I don't want to confuse, I think we're, we're, we're confusing the matter. I'm not talking about having more charging stations, although I think that is absolutely necessary. I am talking about having a parking spot near the front door of the restaurant or the whatever. Basically say reserved for hybrid or electric car as a means to reward these people. For buying an electric vehicle, I'm not talking about another.
I now understand you better, thank you, you're looking more so for the parking space.
Exactly.
Mission with, with, with.
Exactly.
Appropriate sign saying.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, I, I misunderstood you, thank you for correcting me.
Well, what I'm saying is, this is probably going to have to go through planning and zoning town council, blah, 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 blah. So let's get the ball rolling and make that recommendation to them.
Joyce, I want to know where it's going to fit in that twenty, thirty page book, so, um, if you, yeah, because. I want to get our five points. I want my five points. You come up with the ideas, I am going to find, but I need to understand, so if you want to write up, um, really rough draft. And where you think we've got, um, or we have to maybe do here, do here, it will allow me to make sure I understand and I'll go hunting. In that big book. And find out where we can put that, because there is a section all about cars and so forth, and if I find this section. I can then send it back, read, read, and then we could, uh, work together and find out what we have to do. And now we got Mike from Planning and Zoning, all right.
Give me, Patty, just give me a hint as to what section I should look under.
Oh, I'll give you, I'll give you plenty of hints, trust me. So I, I keep reading it a little every day, um, I can only do so many hours and I apologize.
Okay, I've got, I've got more new business. I've got more new business.
More new visits?
Okay, another thing that, um, I want the commission to think about is possibly, and I think we have the money in our budget. Possibly buying another sensor that we would put up. In the neighborhood. Near the school, either in this, in the school, on the school property or near the school, which I think that's Elizabeth Green, if I'm not mistaken.
That's the one near Telecon?
Upwards in town, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where, that's, excuse me, that's the place where, near Telecon, where the conference is?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
So what I'm thinking is, I think we have the money in our budget to purchase another sensor. And either we purchase it and keep track of it or we donate it to the health department and have Barbara take care of it. And, um, with explicit instructions that it has to be put in that neighborhood or at that school.
Okay, well, write it all up because we got to get it to a paper. Put it together and then it makes it easier to introduce.
Okay.
Because that's, that's such a perfect one, we're already working. With the bulk. Um, telecon and the air quality and that's just expanding it and. I, I, I could, I'm not going to go wild because my head will explode right now. But there's a lot of potential. And I got even a whole bunch of it starting to go into my head about this little parking space thing, because we can use that as, um, not only as a. A reserved parking space and walk away, because that's not doing it, but, you know, who is, who, who, who is, who is somebody that is available or has done it? And, and, and do maybe a five minute interview, which I will be willing to do if we, as long as we can do it, um, like we're doing this. You know, with the, with the Zoom thing. And I, I saw a couple, uh, like podcasts that I saw recently, they had nothing to do with the environment. But it was a way that we would have an audio, not only a video, but an audio. About. Somebody who feels good about this and that, I mean, just think about, you go to our. Our, our Facebook page and not only do they get a little video, but they got a little something and the interaction of that voice. We all know. All of a sudden, it either makes you, it's better than a picture, it's the next level up. And, uh, we can find a couple of things, because I started having like, oh, what about this, ooh. So I started making, um, a lot of little notes, so, um, I think, uh. Uh, Commissioner Bontle, this, this sounds good with the cars, I think it's a good step. Because there's a whole section about municipal fleets within this document, I just got to go find it again. I forgot the number and, uh, find out what that can do and there's a part about. Rules and so forth that the town needs to have when it comes to. These, what do you call these cars, um?
Hybrid.
Hybrid.
Hybrids, well, yeah, and there's another name too, so.
Electric.
Not just electric, but the ones that are like electric and something and then the other ones that are solely electric and. So there's a whole bunch of, there is a bunch of stuff in there, so we can. Find out what we're seeing that is good, will be great for us, then see how we, we sandwich it into this thing and I'll. I'll, I'll be glad to look these babies up because I'm getting to know this book like the back of my hand. Uh, it's a lot of fun, but it's, um. Finding that interaction. And if we have. A face or a voice or both. And it's now raining and pouring again by my house.
Mine too.
Okay, um, so this is going to be one of those nights, okay, let's move on, is there anything else? And if we come up with items like this, um, I like the fact that we get to talk about it, but we have, we have to get better at keeping our meeting, um. Um, as, as best as possible, uh, public participation, do we have anybody? Nobody running for the last minute?
Nope, nobody in the waiting room.
Okay, moving on, um, we have, um, commissioners, anybody else that between the four of us, anything you want? First, I'm going to say tonight, thank you for your, um. Your creativity and, 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 and all that you have done. Uh, it's amazing when we first got together and we were all kind of shy. And now we're not so shy and we're coming up with really good ideas and you're really showing off, so I want to congratulate you. Thank you so much, especially in my, um. Not so great condition, so, uh, I just want to say thanks a bunch. Uh, but anybody else have anything else to say as a commissioner comment? Yes, Joe, go ahead.
I was thinking.
From better.
Yeah, I was thinking, the winter months are going to be coming up and I was just thinking, um, should we start like considering. Addressing the issue of snow removal in an environmental way, when it, when it comes up? When winter comes up?
Mr. Hillman, how does the highway department, I know we, we remove most of our, our snow, but the city, uh, the, uh, the state comes in also, right?
Yeah, there's, uh, there are state roads in town too that, uh, that are managed by state, uh, the state DOT. Um, we have, we have a hundred and four miles that we maintain and the state has, I forget, eighteen or twenty miles or so that they maintain.
A hundred and four, you said?
Yes, the town maintains a hundred and four miles of road.
Really? I thought we were bigger than that.
Well, when you add the state, we're at a hundred and twenty something, so. Because there's always issues in town about snow removal and people complain on Facebook and everything.
I have no comment.
We all commented, yes, they sit there behind their, 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 their computer, drink some kind of hot toddy and bitch and moan. Hey, I live on the most difficult street to keep clean till you can navigate on Kids Lane. And that was from your drivers when I said, oh yeah, I live on Kids Lane, he goes, oh, we hate that road.
That used to be my route when I was out in a truck.
You were what, like seven?
About fifteen years ago, yeah.
Okay, um, that, Joe, great idea, because I think. Being, uh, which, which is the word?
I don't think we ever, I don't think we are, I don't think we ever addressed it as a commission.
I don't, we haven't addressed a lot of things, but these are easy topics that we can. Put some facts together, Mr. Hillman can supply us with, oh, we got a hundred and four miles of road. And, uh, what is the general way we clean the roads and what, um, do we retreat any of the roads with that fancy treat stuff? Or is it just plowing? Like the state puts that goo on the road before the storm.
Yeah, we, we don't, we do not, uh, anti-ice, we don't, uh, de-ice, we only put down the, um. Enhanced salt, which is, um, basically it's calcium chloride with. An enhancement that actually helps to lower the freezing temperature.
Right.
And it's a binding agent in there and it's. And it's a binding agent in there, and it's it's an organic binding agent. I can't remember if it's molasses or what it is. So there is some environmental aspects of it that are that are helpful for the environment as opposed to using other chemicals that are harmful. So we use
you keep pouring calcium chloride and stuff that is
Because I I know one, I know one year they were complaining that they were using some chemical on the roads or something, and and they and they were blaming that for depleting the brakes. Well, that's just salt in general. And we, to be honest with you, yes, you see more salt on the ground because it's visible and we're not using sand and salt mixture. But we're basically still only using the same amount of salt that we've ever used in the past as our treatments go. We're just not using the sand as an abrasive as we have in the past.
And then he kept it a secret so nobody knew.
Well, which is is better to not use this. Well, I mean, it's a catch 22, if you will, but now all that sand that we used to put down, thousands and thousands of tons of sand are no longer going into the catch bases, going into the waterways and creating issues with with things like that, you know, we don't, we don't have to maintain the catch patients like we did in the past because there's just not that much debris. And where does that debris end up going? That sand ends up going into waterways, ends up going into the ocean.
Down to NBC, it makes a mess. Yeah, like I said, we keep it, things that we view or all of us, but that we work with every day, we just assume everybody else knows. Joe, I like the idea. We can put together, maybe Rob, maybe you could put together a couple of statements, and then we'll get pictures and we could start running them November into December into January. And maybe we could get you to get out there and stand on the on one of the the big plows.
Not happening.
Well, it was an idea. I would show you a cute little hat. With a snowflake on the side. Okay, well, I always love when we have, when we get to end our meeting with a couple of little laughter. But any more comments or ideas from our our commissioners first?
I just wanted to say thank you, Jose, for your help. I haven't met you yet, but I appreciate your help behind the scenes. So thank you.
Jose's a great guy.
He's invaluable to me.
Gracias, Jose. Okay. Anything more from you, Rob?
No, no.
You're the only person left.
No, I'm I'm pretty much done for the evening.
Okay, we want to send you back so you can spend some time with your family. Our next meeting will be November 10th at 6:30. We'll do it. We'll do a Zoom. So everybody who brought up some ideas that we could work through this entire agenda, put some of it into sustainable, try to write up a rough draft and get it to everybody's if you can. We meet on Thursday. If you could get it out like on a Sunday, just think about it. Everybody will have a little more time. And if you don't, then bring it to the meeting. But it does make it a chance for all of us to think about it and it go keep our time to an appropriate level. I'm not, I'm not going to be a big piss about it, but I like having the chance of thinking about like what Joyce brought up about and understanding the hybrid sign, the car, the parking space, the whole thing, and it gives us all the time to to come up with our ideas. And then we find out where we're where we need either more information or whom to get it from and go from there. So thank you. That will be November 10th, 6:30 at a Zoom. And the last thing we have is number 14. May I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, Joyce. Who's got a second or you don't get to go home?
I second it.
Thank you, Karen. And may I hear a vote? Aye.
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 Thank you unanimously. Because we want to send everybody. But thank you. You guys were unbelievably filled with great ideas. So thank you very much. I I actually feel really hyped up. I can't wait to, I can't wait.